Rob Usula. I make a motion that we open the meeting. On uh November sir, December sir, twenty twenty five.
Okay.
Six thirty.
And there was second Darlene Sedano seconds, thank you. A roll call Darlene?
Yes.
You have to say Darlene Sedano.
Oh, you called my name, so yes Darlene, yes.
Oh, the street or yes.
Rob Usula, yes.
And Vicky Janicki, yes. Alright, so we are open our um. Hearing starts at six thirty five, so that we look at our meeting minutes. I'll see of nineteen October first. Which um. So anybody need a copy of it, they might take a look at it.
The minutes?
Yeah.
I looked it over.
Do you have a motion to accept the uh do you have any amendments to the October first document uh minutes?
October. But it was.
There's three of them.
Oh. Sorry, I don't know what I asked for this.
So October first was. Um, we're we're still looking at the Brooklyn Street.
Yeah. Is that the first?
Yep. And this is the one. I'm gonna send big one five here in the copy of it.
And people get that's well deserved, thank you.
That was just a continuation. Yeah, that's why we went from amended special permit to. It was withdrawn.
Yeah.
To with the recommendation to submit a new one. Read that back, no. You have any amendments for October first?
I do.
You have a motion to accept the minutes?
Second.
Oh.
Oh.
I thought you made a motion.
Darlene Sedano um moves to approve the October first second first.
First.
October first meeting minutes.
Second.
And who's second name?
I was Rob Usula.
Okay, roll calls, let's start with Darlene.
Darlene, yes.
Colby Strider, yes.
Rob Usula, yes.
Uh, Vicky Janicki, yes. Alright, that takes care of October first, October twenty nine. This is the meeting where we uh discuss Dave Chanel as a new member.
Darlene Sedano moves to approve the October twenty ninth meeting minutes.
Colby Strider, second.
Roll call, start with Darlene.
Darlene, yes.
Kobe, yes.
Come on.
What is that Robert, yes.
Uh, I wasn't there, that's the.
Oh, oh, okay. Uh, but we don't, we only need three, so.
Hey.
Hi.
I'm David.
Kobe.
Hey Kobe, how's it going?
You too. Rob.
We started the actual meeting, so we're just approving the minutes.
So move.
Um. I look, uh, so we need your vote, um, third, Vicky Janicki, except October twenty nine.
I'm very comfortable. Want to still.
That's too.
You could share.
This is fine, fine, no, no, it's fine, that's fine, don't worry about it.
Oh, sure.
Yeah. This way I can avoid, ignore everything if you guys say that.
I'm waiting, my bum hurts.
G M I, G M I.
Alright. Alright, let's let's roll out on the number nineteen. Nineteen um meeting minutes, um.
Do what, do I do I do I announce that he's joining or do you need to do that?
Hi, hi Dave, thanks for joining, uh, we don't need to elevate because we have four. Four right now, so. Do you have a cabinet?
Yeah, yeah, five, five is the full board, if you have just four, then it's gonna be an ad, so five couldn't be majority.
Right, so uh, I'm elevating Dave Chanel to full member for the purposes of this meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, uh, November nineteenth, that was the last meeting we had, um. Where we opened, but we did not have sufficient.
I agree with that. What what was the date, November?
Twenty ninth, um, I'm sorry, nineteenth.
Darlene moves to approve the November, say it again, what?
Nineteenth.
November nineteenth meeting minutes.
Second.
I have to say your name.
Only if you're appearing electronically, I mean. No, why is it?
I think if all five, all members of here supposedly you don't have to, but they were trying to get and have it, I guess.
Yeah, um.
Harvey Bell.
Okay.
You say Dave's. Dave, yes.
Dave, second Dave.
Alright, so it's uh, do roll call, we'll start when I write with Dave. To approve the minute.
And what's the correct protocol? Dave Chanel, yes.
Yes.
Okay. Dave Chanel, yes.
Darlene, yes.
Colby abstain.
Yeah, you're.
I would just. Rob Usula abstain.
Yes, like this is, we had the, and Vicky Janicki, yes, so we'll approve them.
I didn't hear Robert either, Robert abstain?
You abstain or no?
Yes.
Go for it, thank you.
Alright. So we are officially at uh. Meet uh, oh uh, time for the hearing. A little bit over, so welcome, uh, it looks like we have Addison. And. What else do we have here for the new hearing, just so I know?
And Cameron, business partners with Addison.
Okay, thank you. Alright, do we have a motion to open the, oh, we open the hearing? For one fifty nine Brooklyn Street.
So move. Second.
Oh. So move, Dave, yeah.
Second, second, right.
Alright, roll call, start the rate.
Dave Chanel, yes.
Darlene, yes.
Kobe, yes. Rob Usula, yes.
Vicky Janicki, yes. Um, I, uh, does anybody wanna have the pleasure of reading the legal notice?
Did that last night?
Did we do it last night? Okay, alright, so we're all set.
I did, oh, good.
Alright, that's fast. Alright.
Just comfy. Alright, um, Addison, uh, you get to go first.
Sure.
Uh, yes. Give us a little, uh, plead your case.
Sure, okay, so to refresh everyone's memory. Um, I'm Brendan and I are requesting a special permit for our property at uh one fifty nine uh Brooklyn Road. To make uh long-term residential uh leasing of our cottage units permitted. And my application basically goes like this, the. Our property is zoned as outline a commercial district. And. The. Single-family dwellings on the that property uh fit the definition of a uh cottage. As uh in the in the zoning laws. And cottages are permitted by right in outline commercial districts. Um, and so if you guys recognize these dwellings as as cottages. Then it follows that um. The the law allows us to get a permitted long-term uh leasing of these. As long as you deem it to be not more detrimental than its current uh than otherwise, basically. And in my application, I've gone through each of the items from A to G. Uh. From, you know, sewage disposal to water quality and all this stuff. Um, addressing each point as to why it's not more detrimental, I don't know if you guys have the application summary in front of you.
Okay, and did you read the some town council?
Yes, I did not see that.
Can I ask clarification on something they up there just said?
Sure.
What did you, what did you, you said something about cottages being? Um. They can use the definition of cottage, you know, you did something about.
Well, the the um, the law says that. That with, you know, certain things are allowed by right in outline commercial districts, right? One of the things that is allowed are cottage dwellings. And the definition of a cottage dwelling is like single-family unit that is under eighteen hundred square feet. And. So I'm just saying that. If you grant that these dwellings are cottages by that definition, then they're allowed by right within outline commercial district.
Okay, I just want clarification of what you meant. I don't agree with that statement, but I wanted to understand that.
I I would just, I I think you you guys had um. The legal opinion uh letter uh drafted where I think. They said. Uh, something to that effect where uh the inspector thinks that they should be uh deemed as cottages and and as long as uh. It's not more detrimental uh than its current uh uh zoning, which is motel hotel use, um. And they're, they see no issue with it.
Do you have anything else to present at this time?
Um, I don't have anything more. I think I I did. Provide a PowerPoint, some a point of visuals of these places if you're interested, I think everyone maybe has already seen that, it's been. A while since I submitted that.
My my issue and that's and it's gonna be a hard hard um mountain climbs. Is how do you get past transient in the bylaws versus long-term rentals? Because change in use, that's not allowed by by statute and and by state statute, state law, the world, how do you get past that?
Existing use. For. Probably over a decade before we even owned it, uh.
Not my question. It all the permitting, all the permitting that was that was issued was based on transient use and it. They were bold and highlighted within each each of the place, the special permit decisions. How do you get past, you'll you'll, I agree with you, your grandfather to to do what you're doing now is provided that it's transient. You're asking for us to say now you can use long term.
So so right, we're asking for a special permit to to make that.
That's not allowed. You can't, you can't change a use by special permit.
But he's also saying that there's.
Wait, time out.
So let me just, this is the monkey wrench for me, okay, you've got hotel, they were granted a special permit for transient use.
Very dear.
Motel hotel.
Cottages did not exist in thousands in two thousand and nine.
Okay, well, let me finish my thought first.
That's not true.
So then. I just lost my thought. Sorry. So, um, he's saying cottages by definition are allowed in the bylaw. I think what what I what I read in your stuff, so you're trying to say single-family dwellings are allowed on an O C D. But only one single-family dwelling is allowed, not multiple dwellings, and that's what you have, you have nine. Nine cottage dwellings, if you will. And only one is allowed as a matter of right in every single district.
So, okay, so that's the part that I I'm not sure of. But but you are following what I'm what I'm getting at, which is that my my argument is that long-term leasing is allowed. In outline commercial district as long as the, as long as they're cottage dwellings. So that's my answer to the first person asking.
Where are you getting that from? I don't, I don't read that anywhere in the bylaw. And if that were true, you wouldn't be here. If it's allowed by right, you wouldn't be asked for a special permit.
So we, um, well, let's let's let's.
That gets us in discussion fight yet, let's see if they're, you know, we have to. But I want one clarification, because he's presenting something as like a, he thinks is a fact, and I wanna know where he's. Where is it coming from, that's, yeah.
If he had an attorney, they he would do the same thing, he would make make statements affect these people, sometimes on a house of guardians, that job to knock them down. Or accept them, that's that's how we do it.
Your definition of transient somewhere?
That's in the hotel motel definition.
Yeah.
In the bylaw.
In the bylaw.
So there's been, there's been a lot of, you wanna go in a different direction from?
So I just wanna see, yeah, do we have specific questions, yeah, make sure they finish their point, finish if there's any more, um. What I wanna say, yeah, is there anything else they wanted to say, um? And at that point, how how we should just get like some of the. Let's see, then we can go into questions, I just wanna make sure that that, you know.
I, can I ask, do you have a complete copy of the package you sent us, like a hard copy?
Of your application.
Yeah, not the application, but for these, all the things, all the supporting docs you had. I read through them, I I'm not, I'm not gonna use my own printer to print that stuff.
You happen to have the the town's uh legal uh opinion letter? In front of you?
Yeah.
I have read that.
Yeah, which, you know, I I actually disagree with a lot of things this this young associate was saying, but that's another story.
Yeah, I think you misinterpreted the way you formed it. Actually, he was correct, but. And when he says that the board can. Can grant a special permit if you find blah, 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 well, that's procedural, it doesn't mean we should for found it. It's like, that's the procedure.
Yeah, especially, yeah, special permits, it's not quite right, but you you make the decision, it's not detrimental, that's 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 what we've been doing for. Me thirty years, you for thirty-four years, but it's, the question is. I mean, I agree that you guys are grandfathered for what you're doing with transient use with habits, with cottages, whatever you wanna call it, with the kitchens, that's what we did in oh nine, oh ten. It's the transient versus long-term that I can't get past, I'm just telling you that straight up front. So I was hoping you could. Hear your your discussion towards that and try to convince me otherwise.
I. I guess, I mean, obviously, I'm not a a legal expert, so I guess our case was is more. We believe it's just more beneficial to have these as as long-term rentals than than transient. Uh, motel use, I I think that would just be better for the the town. So that's why we're 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 just applying for the special permit. For that reason, um.
I just, I don't disagree with you, but it but just because it's it's something that's good, doesn't mean we can go, we can ignore the bylaws and the state statutes and say otherwise. We have to, you know, we've had it many times where people have come for applications to us and we all as a board, they say it's a good idea, but we're not, we don't have the jurisdiction or authorization to do it. And people have gone to town meeting and and drafted and had new bylaws drafted and accepted that way, but we don't. Just because we wanna do some, we have to justify it based on the jurisdiction that we have in the bylaws.
Well.
You know what I'm saying?
I, yeah, I I hear you, I I, if I look at the the legal opinion here. It seems to me their conclusion was as long as you determined it was not more detrimental than the existing non-conforming use to the neighborhood. Uh, then. It's, it it, there isn't, there's no issue with with the change, um, that's just from the legal letter, I I. Not an expert.
So this, so I'll give you the sections that 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 run contrary to what the what the attorney is saying. So, um, one forty-five dash four is called prohibited uses. There's any use that's not specifically or generically listed herein or otherwise, herein meaning the bylaws. Or otherwise permitted in a district shall be deemed prohibited. So because of the O C D allows for cottage types that are transient, it does not specifically mention long-term, which means it's prohibited. Then it says, then then we don't have the ability. To change that with a special permit. That's the problem that I see, and I'm dissecting the bylaws, which is, that's what you get for doing it for so many years now. That's that's the problem that I have here.
They're reading into Garside's definition, he, when he wrote the letter, he got into definitions in the bylaws. And the definition, these definitions really don't. Pertain as far as I'm concerned, because what's there structurally was there before. So that's why I can tell, so when when those special permits were issued. It's because there was a motel already there. So it was Harrison's Motor Court was the name of that place for over thirty-five years.
On the record.
We've been, yeah, we've been dealing with that for years.
So Harrison's Motor Court is what was purchased. When the zoning board, they allowed them to redo structures that were already there, which had kitchens. The motel definition doesn't include kitchens, and that's when people are getting hung up. Motels are in the bylaw for O C D as a matter of right and as special permit. The kitchens.
That's what.
And they wanted to rebuild them with kitchens, we allowed them to do that, and that's what was non-conforming was the kitchens. The use was.
But they had it in the existing, in the Harrison Hotel, they had kitchens in there.
Right.
So they just wanted to build new structures with the kitchens, that is grandfathered.
That was what the pre-existing non-conforming was, because it didn't, it was already there, it didn't conform with the definition of motel. Okay, and we allowed them to do that.
Wasn't Harrison Court motel as transient that was pre-existing non-conforming, it was the kitchen. Kitchens in it, right.
The structures pretty much, which, so it's the use of the kitchens well altogether, that's what was. Non-conforming.
Okay.
So that's why we made a big deal. Out of the transient, because we knew with the kitchen, someone would try to do long-term rentals. And guess what, they did. So that's, but so that's what get me to, and like, okay. We need, they're they're going into what we need in town and all that, but that's, that's not our view. Of what we need in town, we have to go by what's allowed. By by um right, what's allowed by special permit.
Yeah.
And then how you get to the changing and non-conforming use that's prohibited.
So the the re, the thing, the application they made was under one forty-five dash eighteen, which is extensions and alterations. It starts off, pre-existing non-conforming structures or uses may be extended, altered, changed or rebuilt only by a special permit. Um, so. Why doesn't that apply? Why is it, because I think that's what the law.
That's what, yeah, that's what they're coming in under.
But it gets, it gets.
It typically states prohibited uses, it's not, it's it's not mentioned, like a lot of the bylaws we have that we deal with. Um, there's there's. Activities by right, you don't, it says you can do this, that, then it says, well, but you if you wanna do something else. These examples, then that's a special permit requirement, if it's not, if there's nothing mentioned within that bylaw section at all, by by this paragraph, it's deemed prohibited.
Okay, so even if I have a pre-existing.
Pre-existing is different.
Okay.
It's pre-existing, there's a, there's a, a six-year and a ten-year um statute of limitations by state statute that allows, allows for. Um, we've done it a couple times, but it allows for. I won't say waiver of the bylaws, but it allows for overriding the bylaws if you can, if you can demonstrate that you've had. Um, long-term, in this case, long-term rentals for at least ten-year period, you can do that. Um, and then that that would be a grandfathered use as well. Um, that that's it, it's a, it is a seven-year statute for structures and a ten-year for use, um. But we're not here for that, you know, we're not here for that. The the one thing that the 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 section that the attorney missed. And I, and I was, I'm disappointed Adam didn't do this himself, but um, it's one forty-five dash four, the prohibited uses. It's this, and that's that's the catch-all for everything, if it's specifically not a permitted structure, um, activity, use, whatever. In any section, it's deemed prohibited. Period, that's, it's 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 one of the shortest bylaw sections we have in our town bylaws. Do you guys wanna read this at all? It's one forty-five four.
Right. So.
And I would agree, the O C D does have hotel motel as a matter of right, which.
There's special permit.
Those are.
You know, yeah, I don't understand why it's. But.
It's the kitchen portion that was added back in the day.
Okay, but I think that's why we do non-conforming, because we said the definition was.
Alright.
Yeah.
And that would have been a stretch, you know.
But they're those, they're those were done when, those are the two years that I was off the board when I was a selectman, but. I, you guys did a good job in outline, the the decision was point on.
Um, but even if I was to go through all this criteria. I and I I read all this, you're not getting me as to less det, as to not more detrimental.
Hope so.
How is it not detrimental?
Well, it's a, the O C D is allows for, it's a commercial district. Um, granted, there are residents, obviously homes in the area. But that particular site, you've got a single-family home, you got nine motor courts or cottage dwellings, whatever you wanna call them. And then you have a storage unit right next door. And, um. What's the difference between long-term and transient? Well, in town, and if that was transient. You're not gonna have nine buildings with vehicles pulling in and out of there. Twice a day, checking in and checking out.
It's also tax burden on a tax basis for the children in school too.
Well, that's what I was gonna, so. And if if you, when people travel, there's, they usually travel together in one car. If people live in a, two people live in a dwelling, most people have their own cars, so there's, I would say you might have two cars versus one car. Right?
Okay.
Do most people share a car? Most people have their own car, so you have two cars coming and going every day. Um, you have a school bus potentially stopping there. You have, you know, when people are transient, they show up at a motel, they probably check in, go to sleep, wake up, boom, they're gone. Um, are they hanging out in the yard, are they? There's, there's so much more activity I see with long-term, completely different than transient, in my opinion.
This is just a regurgitation of discussions we've had for three years that I've been involved, so on one forty-five sixty-five, which is part of the statute of the bylaw that you referenced for your application. Section F, it says, in addition to any, this is a qualifier. This is the lead, this is the lead into seven points that we have to comply with. It says, in addition to any specific requirements elsewhere in this bylaw, in addition to any specific requirements elsewhere in this bylaw, bylaw being the entire thing. This is incorporated by reference, and that's the prohibited use.
Well, that's.
So even then, it says you could do this, but. You can't, you still can't get past that.
Well, that's where suitability of the site probably comes in to me is, okay, it's zone, it's O C D, it's a prohibited use, it's all suitable.
It's more about legal arguments, it's not, it's not even a physical effort, it's just the. Start, how do you, I don't know how you get, you know, I, I'm a jurist, I mean, I can't, you know, when I first got up on this thing, I I. I can't look the other way, if the bylaw doesn't allow for it, and I don't do it, I mean, I'm, but I'm just one one person, but.
Kobe, are you have questions or or? All point you wanna work through?
Right now, what is the, right now, it's long-term rental occupancy, is that right?
Y- yes, that's correct.
Alright.
Contrary to the what was allowed in the special laws.
So.
And then the building is back the game.
They're, yeah, they're in violation.
They're violation.
Okay.
So we're just gonna shut them down.
It's, well.
Well, let's, we don't, that's not, we just.
It sounds like what we're saying.
Right, but that's not.
I mean, by language with your arms crossed, it says you're angry, but. The one thing about being on the zoning, on the zoning board, you, sometimes you have hard suitors. I mean, we've had people move, we've had people move their structure before when they were over the limit. It's just.
I'm just trying to see where we're going here, it sounds like we're saying we're gonna deny this application. And tell them they gotta come back and. Do something else, meanwhile, they exist as a.
In violation.
Fine, we're not, yeah, but how does that?
I'm willing to listen to anybody that can make an argument that.
Yeah.
For the transient versus, you know, that the the long-term is not, is a prohibited use in that O C D, it's, it's reading the statute bylaws, it's clear. I can't get past that. If somebody can make an argument, I was hoping you were gonna bring an attorney in here to, that could maybe cloud the issue a little bit, maybe confuse me and and maybe you'd agree.
I was trying to get you to get some, so many help when we spoke about this.
Yeah, truly, I, I mean, I, I mean, I didn't do land use when I was, when I practiced, I. I had a lot of friends that did it, and I would refer people to to different various people, but. I know enough about it to be dangerous, and I just can't see how the argument would would come past and and get it passed, I I.
Do other towns have this prohibited? Um, section or is it sort of you, uh, cause.
So one one eighty, one eighty-five, I think, is the state statute for the zoning step one, you know. Um, I, and a lot of that stuff's been codified in various city or in town bylaws, I don't know if that take the section, I I would. You know, I don't know.
I was just wondering, because I'm, I'm kinda surprised the, our legal advice missed that, yeah.
That's so true.
Yeah.
Would I be able to ask a question?
Yes.
Um, so if I am understanding correctly, um. It sounds like. I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with all your names, but uh, there is a potential issue where you you just can't get past the fact that. The bylaws might not allow it just. In writing, and then someone believes that the, a a long-term rental is is more detrimental than transient. Am I understanding those are the two main arguments against it right now?
If I, if I may, I think the um, the initial question is to get. If I if I may, I think the um, the initial question is to get past the transient versus long-term. If you get past that legal hurdle, then the question becomes whether it's more or less detrimental. So that's, that that would be the order of 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 the um, the issue you have to hit, you have to first. Find out if it's an acceptable use, allowed use, and then you're gonna, then you go into. One forty-five sec- section um, one through seven, those findings of fact, you know. Detrimental and all that, all the things we talked about.
So we, we did.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, we we did not specifically. Go into finding the definition of of transient versus long-term, I I think because. We were operating. Under maybe an assumption that that. This seems like a better option for the town than than transient, I mean. People coming, going and no idea who they are or. Or. I I just, I I, we 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 figured long-term housing was was better for towns and then. A hotel motel. Use. Um. Just on its face, I I guess that's what we were thinking.
I can't even find an OCD where multifamily is allowed. It isn't. Right, yeah. So stay away from the definition, let's go with you, what is it?
So so that's why I was taking the angle of cottage dwellings, right, I'm not, I'm not saying, I I understand the. There's quibbling about the definitions, but I was. I I don't describe it as a multifamily, because I think a multifamily is multiple units under one roof. Versus cottage dwellings or standalone cabins under eighteen hundred square feet, according to the definition.
Who's gonna interject before you continue? So on the definitions in the bylaw, it says hotels slash motel, a building or portion thereof, or a group of buildings on a single lot intended to be used for temporary lodging of persons. So you do qualify, you you do match that, meet that, that that definition. Multi, you know, says or or buildings or a group of buildings, nine is a group, so you do, you do qualify for that.
That's what a motor court is.
Right, right, I mean, I don't have a problem with the number of buildings on the on the lot, it's because it that's allowed, I read, I was reading this last night. Um, I, you know, then then that definition says you can't cook, but we. Back fourteen years ago, you guys trumped that.
Uh huh.
It's just the transient. There's a type of transient versus, can you speak to that more? Is there, what?
Yeah, so.
Where's the limit between transient and long-term rental? Is it?
Fourteen days.
Oh, yeah.
Transients typically fourteen days.
And you gain that as a as a broker, or is there, is there?
It's uh, it's accepted.
Must there somewhere.
Yeah, it's in real estate.
Yeah.
At least. Yeah.
Yeah, you wanna rent to someone every fourteen days, but then you go, are they gonna have a mailbox, and you know, that's a whole different thing, you know, long-term rental, but. You know, talking to you prohibited. If if there was even multifamily buildings allowed in here. You could probably, you could change, you would have transition, right?
So you go.
If you, if multifamily was allowed in here, you know. No matter which way you slice it, you've got multiple families living on one lot. Long-term versus a hotel which is transient.
But change the facts, if you had multiple families living in this lot, and they were transient. No problem. Right?
Because transient isn't the same as long.
But I'm saying, but it's be, if you, if it's a transient use, then then they comply with the definitions of the hotel motel and the bylaws. It's just that, it's just.
Yeah, you're right about the status too.
Yeah, for sure, um. Is, I want to finally see a definition of what transient is, I don't, I I mean, it makes sense, you you know, that's.
Is it, is there anything in the bylaws about transient?
Uh, I don't know.
But I just wanted to remind you as part of the public hearing on those mandatory referrals, there weren't a lot, but.
Yeah, I was, I was.
Yeah. I wanted just to get some. A public on here, research, I don't think it is.
Yeah.
Any others or others on the call who have comments? No, we never received written comments. Um, I'll say sure.
I have a little injection. But I I had a different takeaway from the OCD bylaw. I think it. I think it was, it's a little bit ambiguous, but it seems like it's supposed to be a little bit ambiguous.
Since I'm sorry.
The per- is it specifically says the purpose, it says designed to is. The OCD is designed to accommodate the widest range of permitted commercial activities. This is commercial activity. And I detached single one-family dwellings. I don't think it's written well, but I don't think one in there means the number one, it's defining. Single. Right. In addition to a one-family dwelling.
Number one, that's not a commercial activity.
That's for sure.
And number two, somewhere else in the bylaw, it says there shall be not more than one single-family dwelling on a lot. Until the ACU thing came along, the ADU thing, when ADU thing came along, I think somebody.
But then you're only allowed three dwellings, yeah. You're only allowed one of those, so.
So it this, it says this on every single, um.
I don't see a statement you just read, there is a.
Oh, it's the purpose.
One forty-five, one you know.
Um. Single, detached, single-one-family dwellings, just because it's an S on dwellings, doesn't mean you can put multiple, that's not what it means. Um, you know, restaurants are, would you put more than one restaurant? Would you have more than one educational religious use on a lot?
Okay, but but going going. What's his name?
Paulie.
Paulie, I'm sorry. So going going on your line, purpose, okay, and then on that, on B of that section, ho- hotel motel, we've already said by definition, you can have multiple buildings on that, so. It does comply with that. Right, and and it says the purpose is designed to accommodate the widest range of permitted commercial activities. That's the, that's.
And that's the crux.
That's my.
Yeah.
That's the crux I have.
Yeah.
It's specifically not permitted or allowed.
In bylaws.
Yeah, yeah. It would be easy, I would absolutely agree with you guys, if if it said. The following shall not be permitted, and they list the, they make a list, you know. And if I wouldn't do that, there's always an exception.
Yeah, you always should get some, yeah.
And they went the other way.
They're doing it the other way, yeah. I know, it's.
Alright, let me um.
Read in this OCD bylaw, because it's talking about transients.
I don't see it, I just, it's the hotel motel definition, under definitions, there's a whole separate section of the bylaw. That um. You know, you can find that online if you wanna.
It's, they're also rental, so they are a commercial activity. So can they fit under? So the definition of a hotel motel, a building or portion thereof, or a group of buildings. Of a single lot intended to be used for the temporary lodging of persons, says. Who are lodged with or without meals, and in which major provisions for cooking may be made in a central kitchen, but may not be in the individual rooms rooms or services. So it's. Temporary lodging is is the is the transient.
And even if you read multifamily, you can't get a multifamily building on a lot, less than eight acres. So every which way you slice it, that. It just, it just doesn't go, it's not. Suitable for that zoning, that lot, or anything like that.
And how is it the Board of Health says that it can't?
And they just don't buy it.
They're just saying by the septic system.
Yeah, it was designed to.
Whether you're transient or you live there all the time, it's the same size septic system.
Unfortunately, it's that's, that's not their jurisdiction.
So. They're just looking at. At capacity, that's it.
Right.
Alright, so apartment multifamily building, a building designed. But no, it's building, sounds singular. Designed and constructed so as to contain three or more suites of one or more rooms, each suite provided with individual cooking. And other facilities for independent housekeeping. Used or intended to be used for the non-transient housing of three or more families.
That's the apartment definition?
Yes. So there's the. But again, I, there doesn't, in our bylaws, there doesn't seem to be a definition of what transient means, there may be something in state. Like at a state level.
Yeah, when when you don't have, you know, they don't have a definition that's by statute of bylaw when you looked at Lexis.
Okay, yes.
You provided a definition, where did that?
Just.
But.
Back knowledge.
It's just your real.
Just my, yeah. So I, yeah. They could have changed it. I mean.
I didn't see a definition such in this file, it's just so.
I don't think I've ever seen one, but transient is just a general term that's accepted as someone who hasn't lived there all the time. It's not their permanent residence.
Uh.
You're traveling.
The only definition that we do have is. Is a, is a, is within the hotel motel, and that's this temporary lodging, I mean. I guess everybody has their own definition of what temporary, so some people say it's short time, it's gonna be two or three days, whatever, but it's certainly not indefinite.
How how in your mind does it get you? Does it get you there?
I'm okay with it under the OCD. I think it fits under detached, like one-family dwellings, like. Like just as simply as it reads.
But how do you get past the prohibited use?
I, it's a permitted use, it's a.
It's not, not long.
OCD permitted use.
Hotel motel, which is temporary, temporary lending.
Oh, but you're 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 arguing that.
It fits, it fits better under the bylaw, OCD bylaw, by saying that they're cottage dwellings with.
You're talking about section B eight? Hotel motel operation?
Uh, one forty-five twenty-nine, B six of detached. I don't know why they would put. Single-family dwellings under the OCD by bylaw, but there was a reason.
Yeah, I don't, I can't, that's not, that doesn't work for me. I I would agree with. Section eight where it's hotel motel, but then you go to the definition of hotel motel, and it has temporary, temporary lodging.
I I I tend to that with saying that. Of, uh, as always, there aren't any major detrimental. Consequences. Um. Of having nine cottages on that. Six one.
Well, it's like three, it's like three, two-point-three acres or something like that.
Three acres.
It's like three acres, which I I, you know, like go, going back to, if we if we would get past the hurdle of of the. The prohibited use thing, then we would go down. The set, you know, findings of fact for a special permit, you know, that more detrimental traffic flow, using this as an all, so. I probably would find no problem with it, I really wouldn't, I mean, aside from the traffic aspect and the. And the burden on the taxes for potential um, school-aged children moving in there. But I can't get, I can't even get to that point, my me personally. And that's just me. You know, I've. When, a lot of times I've been. Why they've been taking it the last person voting on something where I was o- over overruled.
Would I be able to jump in for a second?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, so it, in the in the legal. Opinion, it it said notably, the subject property is located in the OCD. Where A, single-family dwellings are allowed by right. B, two-family dwellings, apartments slash multifamily structures, multifamily development, lodging or boarding houses. And mixes, mixed uses are prohibited, and C, hotels. Inns or motels are allowed by special permit. Um. And. I mean, it goes on to. To basically say that. If by by reapplying for a new special permit. I I got the, it was my understanding that the the new special permit is to allow a. A non-conforming use essentially. Which is. Perhaps the transient versus long-term rental, I I thought that that is the special permit. And that is the non-conforming use.
Well. You can apply for anything you want, doesn't mean. That it's allowed, or we're gonna find the criteria to allow you to do it. Um. So the procedurally, you're correct. But. You're asking to do something that's not allowed there.
Well.
Yeah, so. Impressive.
The table of principal use regulations. Defines, uh, says dwelling, single-family, I know it doesn't say the word cottage. But the word cottage was not even in the zoning requirements until town meeting in twenty twenty-one. Which says, like you just said, in in OCB, it's allowed. Just by regulation, so.
Well, there is a main house there, that's a single-family dwelling, and the rest of them are the are the motor courts, which were.
So you're saying they're not cottages. Under under town meeting amendment in twenty twenty-one.
I don't see them as single-family dwellings, because they're not allowed, you only have one single-family dwelling per lot. Period, end of story.
That would be.
You're reading.
That would be true.
You're reading. An S here and wanting it to be that, and that's not what it is, and it says it under every single one, and if you could have multiple single-family dwellings on one lot. Then why do we have another part of the bylaw that says you can't have multifamily? On anything less than eight acres, it doesn't even make sense.
It's the, it's the grandfather nature of the Harrison property. Really.
Well, it's a great, their grandfather, that's probably the reason why hotels and motels is even allowed, you know, or they made that OCDs, because. They were there for a really long time, and they wanted the bylaws to fit what was there. That happens, um, because they existed before the bylaws, right, so it's like, oh, there's a motor court here, we should put that in OCD as part of. So they are commercial use.
But still doing things there.
Um, just what they do. There was some vote about cottages, cottage dwellings at the last. Special town meeting. And it was the spring, alright.
Though you've got.
But they haven't been approved yet.
Created for the age-restricted bylaw.
That's right, yeah, yeah, okay.
That's what those were created for, and they're actually part of that bylaw.
Are they specific, is that definition specific to that bylaw section, or is it general, it's a. A general definition for all of bylaw?
Well, it was, I I I don't know the answer to that, but I do know it was added under definitions when the age-restricted bylaw was adopted, that's all I know. Uh.
Yeah.
That's what it.
Would I be able to ask, um, it sounds like some of you have been on the board for a long time. When that, when that cottage dwelling definition was added. Uh, what was the property or what was the scenario? Where it had to be added?
Age-restricted bylaw development.
But she's talking about in twenty twenty-two, right? And that that's not going back when the Harris's, Harris courts were created, this is something specific.
Recent. And that would have been something done at town meeting, we don't, all we do is is.
We're being.
Enforce the current bylaw, we don't make changes, we don't, we stay away from everything like that, because this is our job, is to. Read these words, interpret them, and see if we can. Help you do what you wanna do.
Yeah, I was just, I was just hoping to maybe get an idea of it, if if there's another property in Townsend that that is using this cottage dwelling definition. Um. For comparison.
The only one would be the H.
Well, you're stupid.
Would 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 be.
In, in kind of ways.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They couldn't get, they couldn't get multifamily on that.
There was a, there was a a structure, it was called Benjamin Motel.
Yeah.
Back in the day, um, they have since gone condo, they've condoized their their entire structure, but that was. The 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 two reoccurring, I would say problems, issues that we had over the years. In that area was was the Harris motel that you have now, and the Benjamin motel, which is no longer on the boards, because they they. They created, put put them all into condominiums. Um. So. Yeah, I mean, I think those, between one of those is is what the reason for the creation of the hotel motel section of the OCD was created for. But I don't, I I don't have a recollection of. And bylaws, they first came out like sixty-seven, and there's probably four or five iterations of it, and each one. Went from the first was like five or six pages that went, I used to, before I left, I had every, I had complete copies of every. Section meanwhile. Back in the day.
Alright, so this for, to be complete, I'll read in the referral notices, just so we have it in the record. So the first is from the highway department, there was no comment. Next, we have the planning board. Um. Sounds like change of use complied with current town bylaws.
Who's that?
That's well.
What, no, um, pepper. Sign and sign.
Oh, I thought, I thought.
Playing.
Not the selectman, so that's who. Where the.
Where the selectman said, we trust zoning will make the correct decision.
So.
And I don't even know why the selectmen are asked to comment, they really shouldn't anyways.
Uh, Board of Health, uh, the subject system and well on the property are adequate for proposed use. Regardless of whether the occupants are long-term tenants or transient in nature.
That's.
That's why we have further referrals. So they've been written, we're formally.
Is there a letter that the book, that the um, building inspector's only enforcement officer that he wrote?
Yes.
I haven't seen.
I have not seen.
I haven't seen that, no.
Put into terminology definitions. Yeah, it wasn't, and it said regardless, yours violating. Um.
What's the history, how did we get here? Did you guys apply to an to to uh enhance a special permit? Or did the building enforcement guy saw what you were doing and he sent you a cease and desist letter? What's the horse on the cotton this one? Who, how did you guys get here?
Addison went through us, but we initiated it, um, Addison, if you wanna go and do it.
So you spoke to the.
Yeah, sorry, go ahead.
No, I said you spoke to the Billy Inspector, which triggered his letter, or he, I was wondering if he initiated himself.
No, no, we we asked him his opinion and he and and he wrote a letter that we have, I I'd have to find it, but um. No, there there, nobody came to us, uh, we initiated it, um. Because of the uh health uh department uh wanting us to renew, um. I I can't quite remember the various uh certificates and um, we talked to them and they said you might wanna think about rezoning it as as long term rentals. Addison, you might remember better than I do, this has gone on now for probably six or seven months, I think.
Yeah, that's correct, that's, yeah, we reached out to Robert Garside uh for that reason.
Right there.
Yeah, I I was just curious what what was driving it.
Alright. So at this point, it's aren't any more commentaries, I'll close the public portion of the hearing.
Um, I I still wanna say some stuff. Well, I was just, I'm just going back to what what Brennan pointed out in the in the um legal opinion, which is I think where I got the line of argument that I set up here, which is that it says at the bottom that in outline commercial districts, single family dwellings are allowed by right and the definition of a cottage dwelling is a detached, single family dwelling. So I I feel like for for me, there is a clear way to in good conscience formalize in in, you know, formalize and grandfather in this longstanding decades long use to avoid the alternative of evicting nine families and subjecting the neighbors to, you know, having a transient motel next door. So that's sort of what I would submit as the 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 reasoning, the logical path to get from that first question to then my seven bullet points of why this thing is not um more detrimental than uh a motel.
So if cottage dwellings are in here as a matter of right. Um, or single family detached dwellings are in here as a matter of right and the building inspector agrees with you, then you wouldn't be here. Right?
No, I, well, he, based on what the building inspector wrote, um, I think he did agree with us.
Yeah, he he wrote, he wrote a letter uh agreeing that.
Yeah, I think he he advised us to do this, in fact, he thought it was gonna be I I my interpretation was he thought it would be easy enough that we would not even need a new special permit, but just revise the old one.
Yeah, yeah, it's four paragraphs, is that being said, my determination is that you need to reapply. Which of that was, that was an administrative, that was not a good, good suggestion. To the ZVA for use as a long term rental, you know, in lieu of the hotel motel use, which was directed in these decisions, so that's, that's what, that's what these one E directed to us is the is the the transient versus long term use. Which again is the issue that I have.
I don't see anywhere in this letter that says anything is a matter of right.
It's at the bottom, underneath section one forty five dash five, the last paragraph.
What's the date, what's the date of your letter you're reading? Cause I don't see that either.
September twenty ninth, two thousand five.
September or May?
It's the, it's the email from Beth, it's stamped September thirtieth.
Oh, I'm reading his letter on May twenty nine. But it doesn't say here, okay, um, single family dwellings. If you go look up the definition of a single family dwelling, does it say it has to be long term? Does it say it has to be transient? No, so if it fit under that for permitted uses. If that's what they were, multiple single family dwellings. And nothing in the definition, like you're trying to say for everything else, says long term or transient.
Oh, oh, hold on, I I'm not following, so to me, the transient thing is coming from if if you deem this to be a hotel or motel, then that's where the transient term sneaks in. I'm saying if you re, if you consider it to be a cottage dwelling, which based on this is allowed. And I'm saying that each of these is a single family unit that's under eighteen hundred square feet. And single family dwellings are allowed by right in OCD, to me, that's a clear way to say that therefore the motel definition doesn't necessarily apply. Therefore, the transient, you know what I mean, the trans, you don't need to go to.
Doesn't, uh, does it say it allows cottage dwellings? It says single one family dwellings.
Yeah, yeah, it's a single.
Single family dwelling.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, a single family dwelling is allowed by right, a cottage dwelling is a is a single family dwelling.
A building or part thereof designed, erected and used for continuous and permanent habitation for one or more families or individuals. It it just says a building, so question is, can you have more than one dwelling on one lot?
If you were to go that route, you'd be better off calling them cottages to limit the square feet. Right, yeah, eighteen hundred square feet.
You're saying the 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 total square footage of all nine is.
Well, each one can only be eighteen hundred square feet.
Yeah, the intent of the cottage. For what? For high density development, uh, and in age restricted development, that's what they, that's why they created that definition.
The cottage dwelling was related to.
Yes, for high density.
Specific, it's specific, yeah, we're talking about ten, ten properties on one one building, why is it just stupid?
I'd I'd only be saying what I said before, repeating itself.
What is this now?
He's the building, he's the temporary building. Interim, interim.
Okay, uh, that was such a good question, what was the question?
Well, something about single family dwellings.
Of the of the OCD?
Yeah.
There's my territory classification. You should reclassify this non-own and occupied cottage dwellers as defined by Townsend by law. Don't have to define. Right, do we have cottage dwellings as though there is defined?
We do have a definition of cottage.
They could find it twenty two, but it was specific to the.
And then and then it gets, it gets referenced with the U's now as well.
Did you find that, Beth? What was the uh the definition of of um, think about time, cottage dwellings, it was in twenty twenty two? You said it was specific to the A H R.
It is specific, it was created for the age restricted development, does anyone have the definitions? I I printed out one forty five five. Okay, so yeah, one forty five five would have the definition of cottage dwelling. But it doesn't say in the definition that it's specifically for age restricted. But you can see when it was added the same year.
That's what I was saying, is it general to the bylaw or is it specific to the second?
Doesn't matter, you're taking the term cottage dwelling and you're interpreting it to be single family dwelling. And if it was, then the end here is a permitted use, a cottage dwelling, we would have changed that if that's what they if they wanted it in there, it's a permitted use.
Can we pause there? I I don't really understand that, so why, why is it, cause a cottage dwelling, if there's other um constraints on that, right? It's the square footage. So why, why can't a cottage dwelling be a more specific kind of single family dwelling? It says, it's the, it's a detached one family dwelling that doesn't exceed eighteen hundred square feet. Why is that can't be, why can't that be a subcategory of single family dwellings?
You can call it whatever you want, you're still not getting me through transient versus long term.
But but transient only applies to hotels, to motels, right? So a train, there is no transient requirement on cottage dwellings.
Yeah, just that on the the building inspector that that was passed over, the building inspector defines transient as um, well, I can see for less than thirty days, so like that's, I don't see that in the bylaws, but that's it.
Okay.
I don't, I I don't know that guy, so I don't, I know we 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 shared with like four other towns, but.
If it, if it wasn't defined in the bylaws, how how would any motel hotel be expected to comply with it? That if if nobody would know what transient even really meant.
The true, well, the term transient, it talks about, I we read, I'm I'm.
The dictionary, the dictionary.
But it talks about temporary, um, the hotel motel talks about temporary lodging, that's on hotel motel, in our definition section, talks about temporary lodging of persons who are lodged there. So we use the term transient versus temporary. I don't know if it's tomato and tomato, but that's, we've been using transient for many years, but the the bylaw defines it as as temporary. What's temporary?
A person who is staying or working in a place for only a short time.
Yeah.
Uh, a momentary variation current.
But I think the cottage dwelling is, I mean, um it is defined as far as temporary, well, you know, temporary residence, not not long term.
Can I just add some context for cottage dwelling definition? In the age restricted by law, um, looking at subsection C, subsection four. It says for cottage dwellings, two family dwellings and townhouses. The minimum setback shall be thirty feet from all property lines in the RA and RB districts. Unless the planning board determines that a reduced setback is necessary to achieve the purposes of this section and will not have a detrimental impact on the neighborhood. So when I read that, I feel like this this cottage dwelling belongs in the RA or the RB district, would that be right?
It doesn't reference any other zoning zone section?
It's, um, I don't think it's anywhere else in the bylaws, I do believe it was created for this.
Here though, the one forty five five.
It's in the definitions, correct, yeah, but it isn't anywhere else in a bylaw that I'm aware of. Um, then.
So. And it could, it says added, um, May, May eighth, twenty twenty one, at town meeting, article twenty three, you would read, you have to go back to the um the article itself and see what the, what if it said the intent, is anything on any kind of stash, you could just go back to the articles.
Yeah, so listen, this is the context of why it's creating cottage dwellings. Can you describe what you just talked of? Uh, can you describe what what it is, just so we have a context? Um, well, it basically, yeah, it's just like I said, it's created for the age restricted development by law, which is uh grants uh higher density for developments that are age restricted, so you can build more units on a smaller lot, um, if you comply with the rest of it, uh, the bylaw, so. Yep. It does say here, you know, in the RA and RB districts for this particular bylaw. And, you know, but where it doesn't say it in the definitions, it does say it in the bylaw. I don't think it can be transferable, but I don't know that.
And it says for cottage dwellings, two family dwellings and house, townhouses, the new setback, like you've read. Uh, all park lines in RA and RB districts, but it doesn't say specifically any other districts. I can argue that.
I just, I can't get the, yeah, the definite, the difference between running a transient business with one single family home and a transient business to rental property. Long term rental property when multi-family isn't even allowed in the area. It's, it's the bottom one, really. You can get into definitions and all this stuff, you can try to read an S on something when that's not what it means. It doesn't get, it doesn't get you there, you know? Especially where, somewhere else in the bylaw, I know, single family dwellings is one per lot. Even with it allowed. Oh, there's a lot of errors.
They just didn't know how. Well, no, that was a town shot.
Isn't that why we're asked, sort of why we've gone through this process to get a new spe, a new special permit be because it it doesn't uh comply neatly with anything currently. So I I I thought that's sort of the the whole, the whole purpose of this and 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 we felt it was less detrimental to the town.
One more, one more thing on the single family dwellings, there's multiple allowed in the OCD district. It doesn't mean on one lot.
It does, it says detached single, which is one family dwelling, so I I would take that to be one unit, one one dwelling per lot. If you're gonna make, if you're gonna make an eye and try to get a, my my issue, that would be the cut through one way to do it for sure.
What, um, one way how?
Uh, using using attached single as opposed to the uh hotel motel definition.
I think that, I mean, ultimately, trying to find a place for this to fit in.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
No, it was valid, he said in in previous, as we've had, we've had discussions with applicants and we've suspended the application. And give, it was one time, it was like a year and a half or something like that, we gave, we gave them time to to draft their own specific article for the next town meeting and we we put the, we put the application, as long as the application is in a base where and we're and we're holding it, they're not gonna they're not gonna take action on it by, as you say, evict people, cause um, cause you're in the process. You you just have, you would have to submit a letter and writings that you agreed to to um suspend the hearing and um and we have to continue for a time specific, but I forget, oh, it was a diet, it was a diet place couple of years.
They get the rumor, yeah, cause we, oh, yeah.
Until she got the town meeting to vote on a new article that allowed her use and.
And then the next, two weeks later, we.
We passed it, it was like boom.
You're good, yeah.
Yeah.
So there there is ways to get around, we've had, we have history with that, I know you guys are probably trying to sell this as one of the, one of the, one of the issues that you um, are you, is this gonna be marketed, is that?
No, 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 not at all, we're we're not trying to sell it, we're genuinely trying to to just to do.
He was trying to sell, I'm sorry.
No, no, we we just want to comply with the law and do what's right and and I appreciate that there are other avenues to get this done on a longer timeframe, I guess, what I would say sort of as a closing statement maybe is that from from my perspective, I I know that everybody here wants to do what's, uh, wants to find a way to do the thing that is right by the town, right? The thing that is beneficial to Townsend, and to me, seems like this is a question of, is there enough gray area to allow everybody to in good conscience formalize this arrangement that's been working successfully for the past two decades? Right? And to me, based on all the argumentation I've heard, my view of it, it seems like there is enough gray area for us for the board to vote in good conscience to allow this very unique particular case.
That's, thank you.
So let let me carry that one for the, I I, again, I'm I'm kind of a stick in the mud on the prohibited use thing. Um, but if 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 um, if this, if this was gonna go down and and deny as opposed to having it denied, would you be willing to entertain the the prospect of drafting an an article that that would make it allowed as it'll, as it allowed use in this particular?
Yeah, it would just mean updating that zoning to include. Um.
Long term.
I'll tell them what the process is, as though they understand, they have no idea.
Well, yeah, well, you you would have to, you would have to draft, you'd have to either get the planning board or the selectman to basically um, sponsor, sponsor a a new article at town meeting, you could do it yourself, citizens petition, I think twenty five, twenty five signatures.
Yeah.
And um, and you would just change, change the wording to, uh, change the wording to include long term, long term rental. That that's basically it, then we wouldn't even be here.
Well, my my feeling, hearing this, I mean, in in meetings past that we've had, there's been concern voiced by the board that if they allow thi- this niche case here, that's gonna open the floodgates to anyone who wants to build a bunch of buildings on a single OCD's plot and it's gonna create issues. So I guess from my perspective, I'm just saying, if you, if we just thread the needle on this one because it's so unique. That shuts the door, you don't have to allow anybody else, but if I go and change the law, that does exactly what I heard the board was concerned about. And now anyone can just come in and, oh, it's it's to to replicate this.
Would recommend, I would, if recommend is.
No, and that would recommend, I would, if recommend, is it would be a special permitted, allowed under special permit. Instead of by right. Instead of by right, and then we would have that control.
Where would they even put it?
Now, I, I would, I would also say that. In the years that I've done this, I've never been one that said, if we do this to, to this applicant, we have to do it to the other one. I've always treated every applicant. Different and unique. Um, I've never been, never been.
But you've also heard, oh, but you gave it to him.
I've never, that's never taken any weight to me. I don't really care.
But also, obviously it's not the same.
But I, you know, I, I don't, I don't think this is gonna open up a niche thing. I mean, who's gonna go out on three acres and build cottages that are? Five hundred square feet, you know? I don't think, I think you guys are in a very unique situation. I think by having a special permit. Do what you want is, is, if it was possible by this, by the bylaws. But if, if it was an allowed use by the, by the bylaw itself, that would be more of us, of, of a stronger foundational use. Then you wouldn't have to, special permit, be a matter of right. You wouldn't have to do all this stuff.
Or by special permit.
Would, yeah.
Would it be discriminatory if he wrote it specific to this property that wrote the article?
We take, well, that's, so you're talking spot zoning at that point. So if you specifically said to this particular property, you can't do that, that's spot zoning, but you would just wanna. Inject the words or long-term in, in the definition of OCD. That's all you'd have to do.
And, and Dave, you, you did mention something earlier. I don't know if that's viable, where you said it was ten years of use as a long-term.
So to, to get, to get there, uh, we would deny, you would go, you would have to appeal it to the district of Superior Land Corps. And then they have to point, put that issue out as the litigation matter.
Okay, yeah, so that, but it is another channel.
Yeah, since they've only owned it three years, so.
Yeah, yeah, but I don't know how you put that.
How you prove that, since it's fact, it's fact-based. So. If, if there's, I don't, and I don't know how, I mean, I kinda can guess how some people are gonna vote, but if this was gonna be denied, would, would you rather have it? Suspended so you, give you time to change? The bylaw to add the word long-term rentals as well? Is that something that you? You entertain?
Uh, would you be able to, so, so the two options are denied or suspended and, and?
Oh, deny or? I mean, this, we don't know how we're gonna vote.
Okay, uh, well.
Well, once we, once we deny, if we do deny, then you, then you, you're tagged for two years and that's state snatch it.
How long is the suspension?
As long as you want, we, we would continue. The way we did it in the previous one is, it had, had to do with a dog room facility. It was, it was, it was a bunch of something. It's actually more complicated than what you have. So, but she needed to have the bylaws changed, so we continued, I think, for six months. It has to be a date specific, so we don't have to repost it, right? Which saves you guys money. Six months. May second, whatever.
We didn't have to do it that long, we didn't have to keep doing it?
Yeah, and then, it was, yeah, and we did it the second, and it, and we, we hadn't, they still hadn't done it yet. They still haven't gotten through special. Hadn't gotten the town meeting to approve it, then we continued again for another four months or five months, and I think we did it three times, it was eighteen months. But by the end of it.
It was that quite that long.
It was, it was.
Well, there was a kennel and there was a groomer.
Yeah.
Remember, so the groomer, I think, wasn't as long as the kennel.
Yeah, there's, we did it two different things.
Yeah.
Let's do it dogs, but it, so we, we, you, you continue to a date specific and then you go to that date, we open the hearing. If you're not ready, we continue it again, close the hearing and we go back to the, to the following date and keep going until you get it approved. And then once that's done, and we, then we take. Take notice of the new bylaw and it's, and you can actually withdraw your, what happened, you just withdraw your, uh. Your, your, um, your application, or if it's, or if the change is by special permit, then we just issue a special permit. For that changes.
Go through the special permit process.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And actually what they applied for would kind of be the same.
That would be the same, yeah.
Yeah, I think their application, if the, if the bylaw definitions change, your application would, would be spot on.
So you're, you're suggesting possibly changing the definition to include. Long-term, is it specifically, right, long-term rental of? Multiple, single-family dwellings, or how, how would you word it?
Since you guys, in the history of this thing, you guys have been deemed to be cottage, what is, what am I looking at here?
You're looking under Garfield.
Looking for like that, that's not something, too many papers.
Yeah, I know.
Listen, yeah, bear with me, I apologize, I'm just trying to find the. I wouldn't be part of it long, cause I, I still think that's a problem with one family dwelling thing, but if you do, um. Who the heck is it? Hotel motel, there we go. So, so you've been considered a hotel motel since the Pope was an altar boy, right? So it's, it goes back a long time before you guys were probably even born.
The car Pope?
Yeah.
Um, for existing, for existing hotel motel.
I don't, I wouldn't make it complicated, I would just. Hotel motel, a building there on a group of buildings, I think a lot. To be used for the temporary or long-term lodging of persons, period. And then it's done.
Uh, do you wanna equate a motel?
But does that get into the definition?
Yeah.
The definition problem?
But we have, we have special permits from oh nine and ten that's, that call them a hotel motel. I mean, that's.
And specifically said transient because they had kitchens.
Okay, but now.
Cause we knew what they would do and they did it.
It's based on the hotel motel. If that definition included, if the hotel motel definition included long-term rental.
Oh.
We would have been done. I'd be, I'd be watching the Bruins right now.
In which case I would definitely want that under special permit.
Yeah, yeah, cause then people are, yeah. Well, who's gonna build a hotel motel? Um.
Well, there's the whole Benjamin Hotel, right?
And, and don't do it without an attorney. Because it's gonna affect other things in the bylaw. Like someone's gonna go, okay, well, what about the multi-family thing? You know, that's eight acres. They're gonna wanna put other restrictions on this, so. They could guide you into the easiest way to word it or, um, define it.
We, we are not, now, we're not allowed to like assist you in the creation of the new, I mean, we've, I've helped people in the past. At, at a hearing like this and made some suggestions and they, they've run with it. But the other, the other board, uh, the other land use board, the planning board, that's, that's one of the things that they do. They can help you. Create that, create a new, uh, uh, an addition to the, I don't, I don't think it's, I'm not looking to recreate the wheel there, same. You just gotta add the long-term rental.
But to, to me, it strikes me that, that changing the definition of a motel to be a long-term residential. Situation like that, that like defies. The, the English language in a way where that I think that's a harder sell than what we're pitching to you right now. To me, it seems like the gray area here is, is enough to just. Do this versus what, what it, it sounds like what you're suggesting is, is if it's an easier thing. I mean, to me, this seems. Much harder to do is to make the case that a hotel or a motel's long-term residential. Real estate.
I, I, I understand.
We definitely recognize that you're trying to give us a, an easy way to, to make this change. I, I guess I would just be concerned with, if, if, if you, if it could be eighteen months more than that, everybody living there would be in limbo. Um. As to whether they have a house or not, um, I, it, it just. It's, it's very hard for me to, to process that as opposed to just granting it.
I said eighteen months, Vicky, Vicky correctly said it was, it was shorter than that. We did, we did it twice.
Yes, the, tell them, tell them the process. So this would go to the planning board, the planning board would have a public hearing on it, open it up to, you know, whoever wants to attend and go over it. Um, and once they put their, um, their blessing on it, then it goes to town meeting and it gets voted on at town meeting. So usually the annual town meeting is in, when do we do that now? April.
The first weekend.
April, May.
Okay.
So if, if it, and you have enough time to do it, but you have to get on it. Um, and then do you have to wait for the A G's? It would be, I think if we can do it subject to the A G approval vote, we could, we could grant this. Uh, after, after a bylaw change, it goes to the attorney general and that does take a long time, but we could, after the. After, um, the town meeting approves it, if they did, we could resume this.
Alan.
And, and go through it, and if it was granted, we'd do it just subject to A G.
I, I said, the, the extensions that we did was we were waiting for the A G's determination. So after the town meeting passes it, so tip, what happens whenever, whenever you have a bylaw change that affects land use, bylaw sections. The attorney general reviews that. Sometimes they're fast and sometimes they're not. Um, but generally a couple of months. And now we, we, on the dog one, we continued it once because the A G was taking longer. It's all dependent on. Do they have a lot of things that now they're playing, with towns sending up stuff to review, that kind of thing. But, um, you're looking at. If, if you get on it like Darlene said, if, and the A G responds in two months after the town meeting and it's approved, you're looking at probably June.
Okay, wha- what happens if they say no? Like the board says it doesn't make sense to have a hotel be a long-term residential. Thing.
For the discussion and the commentary, they may come up with a better solution. Yeah, that's what, yeah, that's what the planning board does is, is. Work on the bylaws and update the bylaws, so they may come up with something better than what we're suggesting. So they, it wouldn't be a black and white thing with the planning board. It'd be, here's your proposal and they'd be like, you know, they'll get commentary. The planning board will, might say, well, we will endorse this if it's this way, or we think this is the better way to do it. And then it goes to town meeting. So. Um.
Yeah, I, I guess we initiated this. Out, out of good faith, because w- w- we felt that this was, was better and it made more sense. And, and aligned better with what would help Townsend, and it seems like now we kind of would be better off if we had just done nothing. Um, and I guess that, that. I thought we were helping.
What, what I, what I would say is that I, um. I, I, I just, I'm a little bit hesitant to be so optimistic about the process that you outlined, because I feel like it is sort of. Reminiscent of the process that I've been through to get to this point here, where we've. Gone through stages, we've, we've had, I've been getting signals that this was gonna be easier than it turned out to be. And it seems like there's always like a dead end, like. And that, that's why I'm just hesitant to believe that, oh no, if I just go this other path. They're gonna help me rewrite the law to, to make this work. I, I just don't see how that is a path of less resistance. Than what, what we're doing here. Me trying to keep arguing my case in different ways for, in this forum. I can't ima- it's hard for me to imagine that. That it's gonna be easier the other way, and I'm just, forgive me for being pessimistic, but it just feels like that's gonna be a redux of what. We've been through to get to this point here, and it's been a lot of. Friction and rewriting things and just trying to find, uh. Like I said, just what I think should be just a little bit of gray area to let everyone. Do, do the thing that's right by the town, but it seems like we're. Like almost determined to find reasons not to do the, the thing that it would be simple and less disruptive for the citizens. And so that's why I'm just hesitant, like, am I really gonna go down this other path? I would totally do it if I knew that.
I just stopped for a second. The last time we, these conversations, we went around and around and around for a really long time. And I tried to tell you, you needed some help with this. Weekend, there's only one can sit here and like your proposal all day long and wanna help you and do something with it. But if the, if it says we can't do it, which we're trying to tell you. In my opinion, I'm gonna vote no on this. When they make the motion to approve this, I'm voting no. I can't get there. Um, so we're trying to tell you what an opposite. Solution may be, and you're not listening. There's no gray area with me on this. Um, you didn't, you sort of sought some legal counsel to help you. You're reading it all wrong. You're trying to say, well, this is better for the town and we like this. Well. As much as we like it, that doesn't change what we're looking.
But that's what the legal opinion says, is that if you guys determine it's less detrimental, then it is okay.
But they're, they're saying they can't even get to that point because they have, that they're saying it's. That, that's why I'm trying to say that, that the cottage dwellings being single-family dwellings, which are allowed in OCD, make them not hotel motel necessarily. That, that's, that's at the core of it, because they're, they're saying they can't even get to the seven points of, is it or not detrimental? And, and, and I guess. Yeah, I, if, if you tell me there's really no, it is totally black and white for you and there's no gray area at all, I understand. I'm, I'm not asking you to make a decision that. That you think is black and white and asking you to vote the wrong way on it. I'm, I'm just suggesting that from where I'm standing, there's enough gray area to do, to do the right thing. But if, if you disagree, then that's, that's fine. If you think it really is black and white, it's just everything that, that we've been over, right? To me, it's. Stands that there's enough gray area to move on to that second question about non, not detrimental, but.
Okay, so I'm gonna, um, so at this point, I'm gonna cut off public comment. Um, I think we've, we've heard the arguments. Uh, from our applicants, thank you. We appreciate the frustration. This isn't always easy. Uh, zoning board is not about gray areas, it's about applying the bylaws. And, uh, as to our best of our ability at this point. So at this point, I think there's some options. You, we could continue the hearing. To allow you time to pursue other, you know, whether it's a zoning change, whether it's. Um, getting legal counsel, um, looking at some other options, or we could move forward with a motion. Um, at this point of, to, what is the applicant want? So. So, so I'm gonna open this, uh, you know, back to you. What would you like us to do?
Um.
If we go forward and it's turned down, it's done for two years.
Yeah, okay, so let's not do that. Um. And we'll go down the other route.
Yeah.
Well, if, if I can inject, so, there's five people here, so we need, it's a three, it's a majority vote.
Oh, it's only three? I thought it was four.
Three or four. When, when five, when five people are voting, it's a three or four.
Oh, it's only three.
Oh, that's four majority.
Majority, yeah.
Oh, what?
For a special permit.
No, it's four.
No, that's a, it's.
Yes, for business, yes, actually, yes, three for business.
Right, it's four for a special permit or a variance.
Talking about learning for a quorum. I'm talking about, I'm talking about the decision, so if you have a vote of five, you need a majority vote.
You wanna find it again?
I believe that's what, but what I was gonna, what I was gonna, I just wanted to tell you that.
Specifically says in our bylaw, the quorum for a special permit or variance is four people.
It's, it's, it's part of the.
Which means you need four out of five.
Can you find that? I think it's majority, but I just wanna, I just wanna. Tell you the process that I goes, cause I, I don't come here predetermined to make a vote. I, when I get an app, when I get a package like I did. Before the nineteenth, I look at it and I say, what do you wanna do? I get the bylaw section, I read them, and then my first question is. Do we have the authority and jurisdiction to do what they're asked of to do? That's, that's my first step. I don't even look at the facts. I just say, do we have the authorization jurisdiction? If I can't get past that, I can't get past the, if I can't pass that, I can't do the other section. That's, and that's where I am. It's. And it's, when you talk about doing the right thing, as Vicky said, there is no, the, the right thing is to follow the bylaws. That's what, that's what we're here for. We're not, it's, the zoning board appeals, we're not, we're, we're a reactive board that people come to us with questions or applications or. You know, whatever, we don't look for trouble. We don't, we don't go out and find, find violations.
We're policing.
We're not policing, although some people have been passive done. Um. It's, so. I think, again, I just, I just have that prohibited use section. I just can't just pass that, but if you, if you. Did an amendment to one of the bylaws, however they, however you wanna do it, that allows for long-term. I'm good. I, I'd fly through this, seven findings. I have no problem.
Beth, what, what, what was it?
Four concurring votes, or a grant.
So it's four concurrent, so it's not a simple majority.
Four concurrent, right.
Hooja.
Darlene, good shape. All right, so, um, so based on all that, what would you, the applicant, like to do, would like to do it out of sense?
Interject administratively?
I just wanna be sure that that's apparently, if they just continued this and continued that.
We've done it.
We've done, I know we had, but I wanna, I wanna make sure that this isn't a constructive.
Well, they have to, so they have to continue it.
Line.
Yeah, well, they have to, they have to submit a, a, something in writing that says they agree to continue it. Every time we continue, they have to agree to it.
Yeah, they need to, uh.
We have ninety, ninety days.
Give the board relief from the statutory deadline.
Right.
What's the statute? Is it ninety days?
Uh, ninety days.
Yeah, so just as, what we're talking about, guys. We have the application, we have ninety days to react and to make a decision or it's constructively granted. That's how it works. In order to get past that and continues, you would have to submit a, a, a letter in writing to the board. Saying that you agree to continue this until such time as a town meeting or something, however you wanna do it, but it's gotta be in writing or we can't do it.
And if you close the public hearing, that's a different scenario. If you close the public hearing now, then they cannot continue it.
Right, I just pose, so I closed public comment.
Yeah, that.
Yeah, that changes it. We didn't close the hearing though.
Just public comment.
Oh, gotcha. You said still, you don't wanna do that either. You don't wanna do that, right?
Right, if they're gonna.
If you're gonna, if you're gonna come back in a session and look at the bylaw differently, you don't wanna, you wanna public comment to be able to have them. But we didn't vote on it, so you couldn't do that, right?
Do it, okay, I am um. We send the closing of public comments to them, but.
So that's, so going back what we talked about, you'd have to give, you'd have to give a writing with agree to extension.
How about if they withdraw it again?
No, we can waive it, yeah, but but how will that, if it's suspended, will it keep?
It's not gonna keep the building inspector in advance from doing a cease and desist. So we're talking about, if you continue it, then not they can't take action against you. By evicting or cease and desist or whatever.
That's a good point.
If you cancel, if you withdraw your application, then you're free, then you're fair game. It would be better to continue it and do your and do your stuff.
Would he really, if he knows they're doing, if they're going?
What happens, and he's a temporary building, what happens, we get some kind of another one that's.
What if the letter?
It would, I think it would be better if you continued it with a letter of accepting the extension. Doing it that way. That's my opinion.
And Beth, is there any special town meetings scheduled that you?
Uh maybe one in January, I heard.
Okay, so.
Planning board has a, they have this time period.
I mean, they can do it, they can do it on their own.
Planning board?
Yeah, they can do the citizen.
They can do a citizen petition with twenty-five votes.
Yeah, first special town meeting, you can get it.
But to get the town to agree to it, the planning board should be behind it. I think.
It adds weight.
Yeah, a lot.
But you could, you could, so what we're talking about, I don't know if you're hearing all the mumbles going on. Um, there's a special town meeting coming up in January. Which does not allow for enough time through the planning board, through public comment and public hearing, that kind of thing, but you could do your own. Suggested amendment with twenty-five signatures, I mean, you got nine of them right there in your property, and you just need a few more, right? Um and you and you can, and then you could have that article, an article drafted and and put on, put in on the floor of town meeting. As a citizen's petition. Darling, what Darlene's concern was that if the the planning board doesn't look at it first, they may, they may say no. Which sometimes that sways people, but if you had someone speaking, you could, I mean, you both speak very well, you could have an attorney or you could speak for yourself. At the town meeting, why you wanna do it? I mean, if you if you did, if you did it that way, you did a citizen's petition. You could, you you probably talk in March before, and you could be, we could be back here in March. Versus April, right?
What if they did that and the town voted it down, is there a?
You can keep bringing things back up, yes.
Okay, so.
So to clarify. Yeah, I think we're on the, I wanna clarify the path forward. So if I have my notes correct, so you're suggesting we we do this, get the signatures, schedule this hearing to change the law itself. And we hire an attorney to make the case for why the town should change the law. The definition, specifically the definition of a hotel and a motel. To be long-term residential housing.
Well, he's saying we can do it sooner without an attorney if we want, but the planning board wouldn't see it. Necessarily, or we can do it with an attorney, but we can do it ourselves if we get twenty-five signatures, but. The first step would be you need correspondence from us, saying that we accept. An extension on.
That your request.
And you agree to, you agree to continue the hearing. And it it's gotta be a date specific, and we have to say, so the thing is, if. If 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 you're looking to try to get on in January, we'd probably continue it to Ja- to March. But if 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 it hasn't happened yet, then we're not continuing it again, or if it happens right away, you still gotta wait till March. To take action, because you.
Oh, right.
You don't wanna go too far out where where you're just hanging there waiting, especially if it's been approved. You know what I'm saying?
So the first step would would definitely be to write, get something in writing to you saying. We're agreeing to the extension of the hearing. Just first step.
Is there any way you, what if you could send Beth an email right now before we close this thing?
Yeah, I can.
Yeah, can you do that?
Public comment? If you wanna reopen it.
Yeah, send, send, send Beth, before we get out of here, send it, send Beth an email confirming your 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 agreement to continue. Just so we don't. I don't wanna, not that I don't trust you, but.
You just want, you don't wanna drop anything.
Okay, thank you, we we will do that.
So are you guys recommending a time for this continuance?
General, can I ask you, would you? Would you try to shoot for the January or would you go for the April, Tommy?
Oh, you mean May?
May, sorry.
I'm I'm.
Suggestion, if you're not look, there's no timetable, immersion timetable, why don't you wait till May and get it done through the planning board?
Okay.
There's no, there's no restraint, not looking to market the property and not looking to do anything different, why, why, why squeeze it?
Yeah, no, I I I agree, we 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 can go, we can go longer uh to, but we can, if if we. If we can, if it goes through the planning board, can we still do it? As the citizen's petition with twenty-five signatures, or does it have to be done differently?
If you go to the planning board, they would, they would be the, they would be the sponsor of 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 your um your article. It would be submitted to the meeting by the planning board, which carries more weight.
Okay, so we would go, we would be going directly to the planning board.
Yeah, Beth can help you with that.
Yep.
No?
It's it's tough, I mean, it is a request, a specific request, that would, they would have to do the petition. That's that's how I understand it to have.
Talk to Beth, she'll.
Specifically a request for their.
She, what she, what she's saying, you would dra- you would draft something and submit it to the planning board for for um.
Well, the kids just go in front of the planning board and they could sponsor it, if they voluntarily wanna sponsor it.
They could, I guess, I've never seen that before, you know, to someone have a specific change to the zoning bylaw to benefit. Themselves.
We changed that initial.
Right, but but like, how, but like, did the applicant go to the planning board? Cause it went through a planning board.
I think it was the planning board, it was a.
Petition will go first to the board of swapmen and then to the planning board. Go public carrying. The planning door, board won't make up zoning bylaw amendments for no reason if you love.
So they got, they have to, they have to be requested to do it by the applicant.
If the ZDA or less, I think that's how we did the dog one, I think the ZDA actually requested that. But I can find out more.
Well, we, if we do that, we have to make a motion. Say it again?
If if you, if you've previously gone to to the uh. Planning board before uh for this dog facility, are 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 you able to do that for for this scenario?
Oh, we didn't.
Yeah, we, I think we sent, I think we sent.
We recommended.
We said, we made it, we submitted something to the planning board and requested on to it.
Did we?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, cause it was a definition. This is, you know, we just added, we added dog grooming into.
We just added, turned dog grooming into a definition.
That's right, yeah.
Yeah, that was very, that was very similar.
Would you be able to do that for us?
You know what the easy thing is for in here? And say, existing motels. Can be, don't have to be transient, they could be long-term rentals, and that way it doesn't affect any other properties.
And it's still the only one in town at this point, cause the.
It did.
Benjamin Hope, that that went to condos.
When did, do you, do you guys know when the motel first became? When they were first erected? You know?
We we just, we just know of the renovations that were approved for the special permanent, I think two thousand nine, I think it was. But I don't know when they were first built.
The way to fix, the way to fix that is like Dolly says, hotel motel. Shall include long-term, long-term rentals for structures in existence as of date of this bylaw. And then you, then you preclude anybody from doing it.
It would be the easy, and that way you wouldn't. It would be easier for an attorney to do it with you, because now that you don't have to read the whole bylaw. And see what other sections of the bylaw are in contrast with.
You guys think.
Fix all kinds of other things. I don't know.
Oh boy, I think I'm wrapped around the axle, I really do. Well, I'd rather see. You need to fit this bylaw. Yeah, and I think it does. That's, that's the problem, I think you have two people and and three, I don't even know how Vicky, she's always, she's always. Kind of hit her cards really bad. I know you, you two guys would probably vote in favor. Uh I think Darlene and I would vote against, and I don't know what Vicky is, but then it doesn't matter. That's why it was, if it was three to two, then I would say, let's vote, make a motion, I'll even second, I just.
Who's gonna make the motion to grant it, and then vote no?
So I understand why I do that, but pretty, just denied, it's gonna, it's gonna cave him in for two.
Welcome to the zoning board, this happens every once in a while. It does.
Just to put uh cottage dwelling and eighty use into context a little bit, those are allowed on. You know, properties are half acres, lots now. Or houses next to each other. Even same.
That's the only list we just, we just created for.
And we have four additional units or tiny homes, that's. Same density as these essentially. Yeah, unfortunately, it just doesn't just.
Doesn't say it, doesn't allow it, it's not there.
That's the problem.
It's not there.
I told you.
Then I told you, you're reading a S wrong.
Exactly, yep, that's why.
You talk about the one, talk about the two. It actually has the the word one in parentheses, so. Yeah, I don't, I don't think that, I don't think.
Have you read every single word in this bylaw, the zoning bylaw, every single word?
You really?
You're gonna find. Go find prohibited uses.
Said, would say yes to that.
Find, um, well, over the years, come on.
Bill, Bill probably.
Oh, my God. It was next to my bed, can I read it, it's great bedtime reading. And then there, there's just so many aspects of the rest of the bylaw that that tell you that it's not a plural.
Just because it was written in five different iterations and and making records each other, it's all this stuff.
That's why I was suggesting, the easier, the easier change you suggest. That doesn't affect other areas of the bylaw that I have to go and fix to complement.
I think, if you just, again, if you take that CD section. One forty-five twenty-nine on C C five hotel, shall shall include, shall include long-term rentals for structures in existence at the time of the.
Yeah, I love it. Okay, here we go. Um, in outline, commercial district bylaw. permitted uses, which means you don't need a special permit. It says hotel motel in operation prior to January first nineteen seventy. So I think that uh provided the requirements of. One forty-five thirty-five, one forty-five forty-two, and one forty-five sixty-five.
That's the reason why they needed a special permit, because of the kitchens.
Yeah. Um and then by um special permit. Hotel motel. So. Um, so what was my point there?
I don't know, that's all.
Oh, other than I saw that it was prior to January, so that, remember we were trying to limit to existing.
But there's nothing, there's nothing in 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 the playbook now that something's, something's being constructed, so if you just said in existence as a time of this bylaw, January first twenty twenty-six.
Yeah.
You 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 eliminate the the copycats.
Right.
Don't, you don't even, I don't even, if you make it specific to when Paris motel was created, then it is, then it. Might be more considered spot zoning than.
Go back to Benjamin Motel?
They they both, they both were constructed prior to the bylaws, that's why they, that's how they got, got around it. We just try to make bylaws to fit those cookies.
So the, you're proposing that we update the definition of hotel motel or?
One one forty-nine outline, commercial district.
Yeah, add one.
Uses allowed by special permit from the board of appeals, hotel motel. Which shall include long-term rentals for.
Shall include kitchens and be used long-term.
Long-term for structures in existence of January first of twenty twenty-six, or something like that. It's not spot, because it's it's general, but it's specific. It's only one property that applies, but it would take care of your problem, guys. And then, then you'd come back here, then we would issue a special permit like you wanted, with the seven points, non-detrimental, we'd, and you'd fly through it.
Do we wanna recommend this award to the planning board, or is that already?
W- what, uh, I I guess I got the impression, though, that not everybody agreed that it was not detrimental, so we would come back and then. Potentially be turned down.
No, I think, I think if I, if I may, maybe Houdini's bottle here, I think the own, if we are, if the five of us are still on this board. It would probably be a vote of four to one. And that would be sufficient. That you being the detrimental part.
Well, there's a lot of things, you know, I pointed out some things that may. And if it's a special permit, you could, you know, they said, oh, we're not gonna allow animal, I don't know what, I'm just like throwing stuff out there.
Okay, worst case scenario.
Yeah, you know.
Based on what people said.
Based on the size of it, you're limited in people as well, so. Well, it just answer the questions, be fine.
I mean, Dolly and I have been talking, we want to stop it, Kobe and Rob, what do you think, Sam? I was doing it this way, I know you. If 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 the permit's not gonna fly, you think about doing it this way?
I think that's the only way, I don't wanna.
That's my, that's my.
Something like that, so.
I agree, yeah. What about the, what about the suggestion on on one forty-five twenty-nine, the wording in that?
Yeah, so it would be hotel motel.
So this would still be considered a hotel motel, but allows long-term rentals.
With kitchens, structures and exist.
Yeah.
With kitchens for structures and existence to January first twenty twenty-six, or take a date. You know, just as long as it's app, it's predates the uh bylaw, so someone can't go and say, oh, get a.
How could you, yeah, a special permit, you just make sure the vent here, you know, how could you say no, a town meeting allowed it? You'd say, everyone thinks it's fine, how could it be detrimental to the neighborhood?
Nice.
That's the only path I see.
And we we could make a recommendation, suggestion to the planning board to to modify. One forty-five dash twenty-nine. C five, but they may, they may find a different route to take, I don't know, that, I think that's the simplest. Straight, most straightforward. Um path, that's.
Okay, are are we able to? Request that that you 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 could potentially uh bring that up to the the planning board or the zoning board? Um or the planning board um to make this change to the bylaw?
We can make a motion to recommend the planning board um this update and. We'll send it off, so what I would hope is that when it got to the planning board and there was a. Meeting about it, that it would be great to have you guys there to. Support it.
This is what I just sent over to Addison, is this what you were thinking, a request for extension? I just wanna make sure we're doing this.
Oh, it's up on the.
Oh, my gosh.
I just sent this to you in an email, Addison, do you see it?
We could, I see it screen, yeah.
Addison's muted, I don't know that you're on that.
Sorry about that, yeah, I didn't realize, uh, okay, so it, is it enough for me just to reply to this saying I agree, or do you want me to print it, sign it? Email back?
No. I think so, just email saying you agree, that's, I think it locks in, would you agree with?
You can, you can take care of signing it and sending me a signed.
Yeah, yeah, say you you agree, let you go follow up with with a, with a signed hard copy in the mail, so I can.
Okay, we'll reply with email right away, saying we agree, and then we'll print it, sign it, fill out a sign and send it in physically.
Yeah, I would, I would have been, I would have been hard, I would be remiss to continue a hearing for four months without something, and usually, usually the applicants are in front of us.
Right, yeah.
So you just sign something and just give it to us, but.
Yeah, we're both, or we just. We, I guess we didn't think it would turn into.
That's okay.
As much.
But it, but by having an email with your, with your um. Commitment that you're gonna re-sign and and return a snail mail copy, hard copy, that's fine.
And I, and I put June thirtieth.
And I, and I put June thirtieth twenty twenty-six.
Which, what is it?
June, that's what we did, uh, was before.
Yeah, so if I would make, that's probably right. That's true.
And then you made that motion um.
So, Rob, I was, you were writing some stuff when we were talking, and I, I have this problem I have, I, I, I talk a lot, and I, and I say things in most, but I don't remember what I said, so I, I don't remember that. Those, she was, I used to use a.
Really?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I had Victor phone, I just talk and I, they put it in the right, right? So, so the hotel motel, we'd say something like two, two um, I don't know, to allow for long-term rental and kitchen.
Hotel motel shall include long-term rental in use prior to.
And kitchens, right?
With kitchen.
With kitchen.
Prior to, whatever, January.
Twenty twenty-six, second.
We got.
David seconds.
David, David shall second.
All right.
Do you agree with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any discussion, any discussion, um, recall?
Maybe should I, yes, oh, wait, wait, oh, sorry.
Yeah.
You want to add in the square footage required, or maximum. To minimize, uh, so, so let's talk about the, the probability of somebody being able to get, so if we do this. And they get a permit and they get it all approved before town meeting, what's the likelihood of that going to happen? Because right now we're dealing with four, five hundred square foot structures. Is that what they're, they're tiny. Guys, how, how big is your units average, like four to five hundred square feet or less?
About that, right, about five hundred.
Five hundred, yeah.
Yeah.
They're tiny.
Are they all one bedrooms? They would have to be, right?
Lots.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. With a bathroom and then just a, a kitchen and, and, and bedroom, so combination, yes.
Colly, do you feel com- more comfortable if we put up this square footage? And you can just say, so, you can amend the motion saying for, for structures not to exceed. By five hundred square feet per unit, what's the largest you have?
Uh, they're all similar, but I, I, I wouldn't have a specific value, so I, I, I don't know if five hundred would be like. Cutting it right on the razor's edge, but I don't know.
Typically under seven hundred.
Yeah, so, so do not to exceed, so.
Yeah.
Um, so that's, so, so you will need to make an amendment. Motion to amend, yeah, amend the motions by including a square footage. Like.
David, second?
You didn't say that before. Definition, yeah.
Uh, what, what is the square footage?
Not to exceed seven hundred square.
So good, could you read the motion, gentlemen?
Hotel motel shall include long-term rental with kitchens in use prior to January twenty twenty-six, not to exceed seven hundred square feet.
Per, per structure.
Per structure.
Darlene Sedano, yes, and, but this motion is. It's word to the planning.
Yeah, okay, I'm not, I'm not following that motion.
So it's a, it's a motion to request assistance from the planning board?
Oh, okay, okay, from the Z B A, where?
Prior to, you're going to say the date prior to, that's probably not feasible.
Right, no, the date of this, that, the changes will apply to only structures that were.
Yeah.
No, this is wording for the actual suggestion of the bylaw.
Oh, it's a, it's a look back period, so you can't get a copycat in the future.
Oh, okay, okay, thank you. I'll listen to the video.
All right, all right, so Dave.
Dave Shaw, yes.
That's Darlene Sedano, yes.
Colly Schrader, yes. Rob, you saw, yes.
Uh, Vicki Janicki, yes.
And that motion, but that motion did include that as a referral to the planning board for assistance, right?
Yes. Yes.
There you go.
And so, and then what's the process, will you bring that to that, or do you like need to work with me and, and we bring it together, I don't know?
Uh, I, with your motion, I can bring it to the next planning board meeting, okay.
When are they meeting next?
December eighth, on Monday, okay.
December eighth, so to talk about it, I don't know what the process is, like how long, is it thirty days, sixty days, why do I think it's something sixty days?
Well, what they, what they, what they do is they draft some, they may, they may like something and stamp it, or they may work on their own version, and then they have, then they have a public comment. Hearing, they have a hearing on it, and then, then they submit it to the. Item, submit an article to the selectmen for, for inclusion.
Yeah, so it likely will be done by the.
How long is the hearing notices?
Uh, how long do we have to, before the town meeting?
Yeah, the planning board, when they, when they put a notice out for a hearing, you know, public comment on a bylaw change, how long is that?
How long is what, the posting?
No, so you have public comments on a, on a change to a bylaw, how long do they, how long is that period do they give people to comment?
Well, I think it's like two weeks, I mean, the public hearing is posted and you have to post it and publish it two weeks prior to the hearing, so that's the comment.
That's what I said, we're not enough time for January.
It's only one in January.
Yeah.
Well, if it's the end of January, we might.
Might even squeeze it in by January.
Yeah, you know, by the end of January, and I don't, there's no date set yet, so I'm assuming it's the end.
But if we continue this to May, you can't make it sooner, right?
You can't meet earlier, or can you?
You have to read posts.
That's right, you have to read posts, so maybe you don't want to go to that plan, I don't know. I think it's better to be conservative, you know, because. If you don't make the January meeting, then yeah, it's not going to be.
So gentlemen, the issue is, if you guys, if you, if this gets to the planning board on Monday, the meeting, the planning board's meeting on Monday, the eight, they can. They turn this stuff, this around and they get it approved for the town meeting in January, and it gets approved, we can't do anything until June.
But it'd be most likely that the A G will have approved it by then, and you know it's coming.
Good point, that's what I'm sure.
Right, it's safer.
I have another question, or another, yeah, question. Can zoning changes take place at special meetings, or they have to be annual?
No, it can be, it can be, I've seen that at a special town meeting, so.
And that special town meeting is not being declared yet, if you will?
What's it for?
We don't know.
You don't even know what it's for?
No, no, usually, sometimes, that's just here.
I was just like, you always said our specials by the end of Jan- uh, November.
Yeah, yeah, it's a.
No, it used to be September.
Well, that's.
A few months after the, you know, the, well, you know, um, fiscal year ended.
All right, so at this point.
Vicki? Yes. It's Laura Schifrin, I have my hand up before.
Sorry.
So I, so I put it down, but I'll put my hand up again, if you'll allow me to speak, um. Uh, as selectmen, we are uh discussing the special meeting on the eighth. So Monday, we meet again on Monday from three to six. And that will be on the agenda.
Laura, is that January eighth?
January's, January's special is going to be on our agenda to talk about on Monday, the eighth.
Oh, 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 do you have any idea when the, when the projected date is for the special town meeting?
Hope, well. We had discussed last week that by the end of January is when we would like to see the special, so I don't know yet, but we have. Things come up every day.
Oh, yeah, yeah, well, that's still a lot. If they got, if, if the, if the town meeting was held at the end of January, and everything happened exactly. How it should, it might, they might get it done and submit it to the A G's office by February first.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good work.
I think that all of you are doing a great job. And to the applicant, they're really trying to help you. And planning is very accommodating and helpful. So, from my experience, um.
Yeah.
So.
I agree with that.
I think.
That's encouraging, thank you.
Yes, they are, and Beth is too, she'll walk you through everything, and um. As far as when the, and um, Darlene may be able to find this out, I couldn't on public record, I was looking while you were speaking. Regarding the age of when the bungalows were built, um, it's not on there. Now, but in their field cards in the assessor's office, or in the building inspector's office, they would have. The plans, the permits, or whatever, for that address. So you might want to check with that. And all I can tell you is I've been here forty-nine years, and I believe that those cottages were there.
Yeah.
When I first moved here, so when or if it's before nineteen seventy, I don't know, I was here in seventy-six. Um, so. Wish you luck, I think everybody will help you, but.
We have bylaws that were injected, because that's, that's why Harrison will tell, that's why they created this hotel motel bylaws, because the house was already constructed.
Yeah.
Right? Yeah, no, I think, I think we, our motion to, to go to the planning board was just to say. This only applies to structures in existence as of January first of twenty twenty-six, so we don't have copycats coming down the road.
Yeah, I think, I, I've heard your discussion, and I think it was great, good job.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, so I think we're, we're good with, is there anything we need to do, is any loose sentence on this, um?
So we got, we got the motion, we got the motion to the planning board, yeah.
We need to make the most.
So it's just to continue January, June ninth?
Uh, the, oh, continue the hearing, yeah, you want to go with the June thirtieth?
I think so, I think, I think Vicki's right, even if this gets done by the town meeting in January, then you, then you have four months for the A G's office to approve the bylaw.
Yeah.
That's, you know, it may, they may get done a month before, but.
Yeah, but in the meantime, yours, you're good.
You're good, operators, operators, operators as normal.
Yeah. That was very helpful, thank you, yeah, so June thirtieth twenty twenty-six.
That's the continued June, and that's what you sent, that's what you sent to him, June thirty?
Yeah, in the extent.
A motion, a motion that we continue the hearing to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six at six thirty.
What you need?
Thirty-five.
At David's. Six thirty-five.
Darlene seconds.
All right, I'm going to start on this side, left side.
Rob, you say yes. Hope Schrader, yes.
Darlene, yes.
David Shaw, yes.
And Vicki Janicki, yes. Okay, uh, so thank you guys for your patience, um.
It should.
We have a path forward.
It should work.
And uh. Yeah, just, maybe um. If you can, come to the next, the December eighth planning board, you're, you're going to put it on the agenda Monday?
I can add it to the agenda, yeah, okay. Definitely, I'll, see if I can make it.
Oh, thank you, yeah.
I don't know. I was that section, did you recognize that section in the motion you did, right?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay, um, all right, so we're good with that? Uh, anything else on our agenda now, I've lost my favorite, I. Student?
Yep.
Uh, is there any?
I was supposed to have jury duty today.